I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome.
I have to admit, yep.
We got some people on. Hi, everybody. Welcome to the meeting.
Fran, able to zoom in?
She said she might.
Okay.
She said-
She didn't know if she was going to have connectivity.
Yeah. So I would just get my recommendation would be to get started.
Okay. I'm going to read the checklist. As Chair of the Plymouth School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically for the October 5, 2020 school board meeting. We're utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. You can find the Zoom information on the SAU website at www.sau48.org. It is also posted on the door of the school. If you're not able to access the meeting, please contact Tanya Orlando at torlando@pennybaker.org. If the public cannot access this meeting, it will be adjourned and re-scanled. So agenda review and disposition.
If you can add substitute pay for teachers under other.
Okay.
That is something that Fran wanted.
Minutes of August 31, 2020.
Make a motion to accept as written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Privilege of the floor number one. Lori, do you have anything to say?
No.
Okay. I want to say something. I just want to shout out to Jeff Lyons and Geneva Sambor for doing the Google Classroom. I attended one of the events with Jeff and I thought it was super helpful. So I just wanted to personally say thank you for having that happen. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
You have-
Mike Sun. I see your hand.
Hi. Thanks for having this meeting. First off, I just want to thank the SAU 48 teachers, the administration. You guys have been doing an amazing job trying to mitigate any potential spread of COVID at the schools. And I often see Assistant Principal Carrie walking up and down the field making sure everyone's following the rules. And so on that note, I want to, I want to ask what the school is doing to discourage students from not wearing their masks in class or constantly pulling down, pulling them down. I know that teachers are doing everything they can to make sure that students are masking up properly, but there's so much that a teacher can do unless perhaps you, Lieutenant, could authorize ducking. But I don't think that's possible. I'm wondering if there's a plausible way to discourage students from pulling down the masks. From my understanding, it seems to be on purpose. And I wondered if you guys should maybe institute some kind of policy, you know, remind that the teachers could kind of get together and say, hey, listen, student A in my class pulled their mask down repeatedly and then share it with the teachers. And then that way, if a student was to do this on a habitual basis, a letter could get sent home to the parents, perhaps to help discourage this mass, inappropriate mask behavior. Because I'm just concerned that this is going to, it's a level of complacency and it could lead to, you know, other things. So I'm just wondering about the school, if the school is considering doing anything or if the school knows.
Hi. I can't hear. So can you hear me if I speak right now, Mike?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So I think that your comments are really, are very important and I want to let you know what we are doing to try to work with that issue. Number one, during PES News each morning, we have a reminder. So periodically during that time in the morning, I give direct feedback to all the kids in the building at the same time that the masking up is really important. And also last week, it was a lot about the physical distancing and we did, we got out and we measured what six feet was across Patty O'Neal's back and we showed everyone, you know, tried to give some real visuals around those pieces. And we actually have called home in a couple of cases and made direct adult-to-adult contact if there have been issues. So we are following up with students who have repeated issues with not following the guidelines. We have not followed through with any discipline. We continue to try to have it be an educational process and an engagement process with the family, but we are getting in contact with the parents where necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I don't see him.
Okay. All right. Principals report.
So I wanted to let you all know that as of October 1st, we have 396 students in the building, or 396 students, and 61 of those are in virtual learning. So, and in about, in the last three weeks, we've had about six students return from virtual learning to in-person learning. We, we've had students who where either the family or the student decided that was not a productive learning situation for those kiddos, so they've returned. I do have the breakout by classes if anyone's interested, but I wasn't going to give that specific data tonight. I did think I'd give you a little more information about virtual learning for the students who are staying in that model. It's going very well. Our facilitators, we have two certified educators, Jen Deloge and Scott Southworth, who are our virtual learning facilitators. And they are connecting with kids and parents on a weekly basis and monitoring the minutes on task and the amount of proficiency in all of the subject areas on MobiMax and Vlax. Most of our students are using the platform of MobiMax. And in a few cases where there've been some issues around engagement, we have had parent teacher conferences for those virtual learning students. And that seems to have had a very significant impact for those kiddos, including with some of our most disengaged families. So I really want to thank Jen and Scott for taking on that role so seriously and following up. They're also working with those families, not just with the MobiMax platform, but to give novels to those individuals and writing journals to make sure that the kiddos are getting a very rich experience during virtual learning. We are working on having those kiddos be able to join our morning meetings and staying connected with their peers. That seems to be the biggest want from the parents. Want to talk a little bit about what we're doing in the building around our positive school culture. So as I mentioned just a moment ago, we have the daily PES News that we run with curveballs from Ms. Orlando to staff in the building, but it's a moment for us to set the tone in the building. Last Friday, it was a rainy day. We did a little three-minute visualization of grounding and getting ready for the school day. Today, we talked, I had a big pile of shoes in front of the camera and we talked about empathy and walking in someone else's shoes. And it's a very brief moment, but it's meaningful for the whole building for us to just all be on the same page for what, how to have this be the play, a building where we want to spend time. We've had some visitors attend that. Brian Sheehan, Jess Marinowski, some girl scouts who've gone apple picking, fifth grade athletes. So we're, it's, and I sometimes pop into classrooms and I'll just, we'll just project from somewhere in the building and the kiddos have to guess where I am. So where in the world is Ms. Orlando? In September, we had talked about possibly having empathy be the theme, but instead we changed it to how to take on a challenge as we were coming back in the school. That seemed more appropriate at that time. And we did, during PES News and in the classrooms, did a bunch of work around what is a challenge? How do you take one on? How do you ask for help? Lots of different things around that. And we've just now switched to empathy. So we began with the walking in someone else's shoes this morning. Okay? In the area of curriculum, want to let you know that we are implementing the Intu Math. And this Friday, which is a professional development day, our faculty will have another session, four sessions on the Intu Math curriculum and learn more about how to run that program. We've done, all of the classes have done the beginning of the year assessment for that and are beginning, the teachers are beginning to familiarize themselves with the online platform. Our reading and writing specialist, Sarah Thompson, has worked with all of the grade levels on beginning of the year assessments and has been trained in the Wilson Program and the Level Literacy. So it's wonderful to have her aboard and she's doing lots of hard work for us. So I wanted to shout out Sarah. I wanted to let you know that the student support team is up and running. So that is a group of people working to support the social and emotional needs of the kids in the building. And I especially want parents to know that that meeting is happening and that if they think their children might need a little extra support to reach out to us, they could contact Brian Sheehan or myself or Kelly Carey, Jan Quintle, and we could help them out. Some student news. The middle school had their student council elections and I wanted to let everyone know who those folks are. President is Luke Diamond. Vice President is Luke Legacy. Secretary is Ariann Lee. Treasurer is Connor Heinrich. And historians are Michael Aprileano and Ben Valenti. Those kiddos, I'm going to be leaning on quite a bit to help set, to join me at PES News and to be positive school leaders. Want to talk a little bit about teachers and the staffing in the building. We needed to make a staffing change due to some long-term absences. So Beth Harrington needed to move to first grade to cover Karen McLeod because I needed a certified educator because the leave was moved to be a longer period of time. And that meant that I needed someone for fourth grade. So Lori Hughes has come in to finish Jess Dixon's maternity leave. She was a student teacher here last year and is a mom and resident in the area. Wanted to shout out Jen Weatherby. She spent this past weekend with 16 middle school students on two, well, eight individuals Friday night and eight individuals Saturday night for the Youth Leadership Through Adventure Conference this weekend, or camp out, I guess, this weekend. And, you know, she volunteered her time to do that and I had to go and visit and help out and offer something that happened this weekend, minor issue with a student. And she's just so upbeat and positive and a wonderful adult for those kids to spend time with. I also wanted to let the board know that Sarah Carlson, who is a third grade teacher here, is a finalist for Teacher of the Year. And the Department of Ed came and interviewed a number of people for that process and that the announcement for that will be this week. I think it is this week. So we don't know. There were six finalists and she's one of the six.
Can I ask a question about that? Is that a peer nomination?
That was not a peer nomination. That was a parent nomination.
Okay.
So I believe a group of a couple of parents got together and nominated her.
Thank you.
Yes. I also was going to shout out Jeff Lyons and Geneva Sambor for the Google Classroom training for parents. We had about 24 parents participate in that and it was, went over so well, we're thinking about possibly doing another session, not right away, but in a couple of weeks. Wanted to thank the PTA for the cupcakes and the chalk drawings for the start of school. The students continue to use the whiteboards and the drawstring bags. Want to also again thank Abby Batjelder and Chris Valenti for the masks. And there's a PTA meeting this Wednesday night. So anyone who would like to join in on that, it is Zoom. It's a Zoom meeting. Wanted to talk about the food service. So that, you know, this year we just, we're doing the lunches in the classroom and that's a big change for the building, but that's going very well. And Tracy Sawyer has done a nice job to make that work absolutely new structure and system for that. And we were, we did get money for the fruit and veggie program. So kids are getting free fruits and veggies, all kids in the building every day in the afternoon. And if things, if food is left over, we are getting that into the backpacks that might need it. Wanted to thank John Ramsey for all of his work in tech, the area of technology. He really spearheaded the NIWA testing and got it done for our whole building. So thank you to John. We have SAS testing coming in October. So because of remote learning in the spring, we were not able to do the statewide testing. So all students fourth through eighth will be testing. It's a shorter test and they'll be doing the previous year's assessment, but that will be during the month of October. Wanted to let you know that John Cormier is still in for Gary Miller, who had an accident this summer. So John's been doing a great job for us. Want to thank him. Wanted to just give you a little update on our COVID-19 response and the reopening there. So as I said, have said, mask wearing is actually, I think, going very well in the building, considering what I see in other places. So I'm very impressed with the mask wearing. Even our preschoolers are wearing masks. We continue to reinforce and teach about the six feet spacing and the hand washing. So we, we're being very diligent about hand washing as opposed to hand sanitizer. Not that we're not using hand sanitizer, but hand washing is our priority. I want to let you know that symptomatic students and staff have been utilizing the screening tool and their primary care doctors and testing as necessary. We've had at least 60 individuals tested, or used testing, and that's gone very well. We've streamlined that process with Midstate and Plymouth Peds and Spear. So they've all been incredible partners for us. Nurse Sandy wanted to say out loud to the, to the board and the community that she and I are both very aware that there's a burden on families when we are requiring the student to either be out or get, get tested. And we absolutely understand that that's a challenge, both financially and for logistics. And we just want to say thank you and let's keep communicating with each other because it's the communication that helps us manage that situation in the moment about what's, what really works for your family and what's necessary when following the protocols. I'm going to keep rolling here. I know I'm talking a lot, but I have some new requests and updates for the board. The middle school teachers are requesting, and I am supporting, that we start moving them from room to room. We've been able to choreograph the movement to really limit the amount of time in the hallways with, with other groups. But the supplies that are in one classroom for a math teacher, it just is not, not very doable and not as productive as we would like it to be or for the science teachers or even for the English teachers. So for the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, I'm going to request that we move to be able to allow those, those grades to move in the hallway. I think it's, we've seen at the high school that it's, it's doable and it's much less students and much bigger hallways here, so. In addition, I would like to request that we allow the middle school to, and fifth grade and up, to do one-day hiking trips. They all miss their overnights on the fourth, on the, you know, the big start of school. Important traditions of Plymouth Elementary School. So we would like to run some field trips in October and early November, one-day hikes, so not including overnights. But we know that outside is a very safe place for kids to be and as long as the buses are, you know, allow for social distancing, I think it's a, it's a good idea. Wanted to speak to the issue or concerns around Halloween. As people may know, Plymouth has asked that we not have kids out trick-or-treating and that what Lisa Ash came to me and we've decided we're going to, we're going to change the tradition and have a Plymouth Elementary School spooktacular event right here. We're going to, we will be on the 30th of October, having a full Halloween parade. The fire department and the police department and the Parks and Rec Department and the school, SAU office and the high school are all going to be Halloween candy stops. We're going to have a haunted middle school hallway. The kids are going to decorate pumpkins. So we are not canceling Halloween. We are just moving it to here where we can maintain some of the safety precautions. I'm actually really excited. I think it'll be a really fun day. So don't worry, we're still going to have the holiday. Did want to just speak a little bit to winter program. At this point, we are not moving ahead with winter program based on what we're hearing from the mountains and the issues of packing kids on school, on the school bus in order to lower the cost. But my idea is that we would do something very similar to Halloween. We'll just do it on campus. So we will be outside and we will get the fresh air, but it'll be more of a winter carnival feel here and I'll be partnering with Plymouth Parks and Rec to make that happen. Wanted to let you know that picture day went well. Thank you to Sarah Tyrell and Amy McKenney for coming to help with that. Want to let the public know that this Friday, October 9th, there's no school for, professional day for teachers throughout all of SAU 48. In addition, Monday, there is no school and Observance of Columbus Day. November 2nd, our parent teacher conferences and there are no, there's no school on that day, as well as on November 3rd due to national voting. So that's what I have for the principal update.
That's it?
That's it. And Kelly's up for safety and athletics.
All right. Let me pull this down so you can hear me. Yeah, so just a couple of quick updates on, on the athletics. We're in our fourth week of participation for the kids and everybody's doing great. Coaches and players are working really hard to get in game shape and, and stay healthy. And I know for me personally, it's just been such an enjoyable sight to walk around out there on the fields and see the kids in action and having some fun. So I'll just give you a couple of quick highlights for each team. Cross country opened at Guilford on September 24th, where the girls placed second overall and the boys were first. On September 29th, they traveled up to Kennet and reversed. The girls were first and the boys took second. We were scheduled to have our first home meet this Friday, but unfortunately that got canceled due to the rain-soaked course and safety concerns there. But this Wednesday, they will be heading to Belmont for another race. Our field hockey is also off to a good start with a win and a tie versus Berlin and Guilford. And the younger players are also gaining valuable experience and battled some tough games against Berlin and Thornton. And this week, those teams will be on the road at Laconia and Thornton. Football coached by extraordinary Coach Ramsey. Players were off to a great start with a win over Franklin on September 23rd. And we were told by one of the head officials there that we were the first official school game in the state of New Hampshire for this fall. So the kids really got excited about that and were excited to represent. And both teams did a great job. Our next event was on September 30th, hosting Kennet and a very much more experienced team, but Kennet dominated and held the lead to win. But PES never quit and put 16 points on the board in the second half. And tomorrow, the team travels to Winnisquam. Then we have our soccer programs. The fifth and sixth team is having fun and playing very well together. They opened with a 1-1 tie versus Thornton. And on the 17th, they went on to capture a win at Holdenis on the 20, I'm sorry, on the 21st. And then on September 29th, once again, they played a great game with Thornton for a 1-1 tie again. And the fifth and sixth graders will host Campton tomorrow at 4:00 PM. Our seventh and eighth grade team is making a strong showing as well. They captured wins in the first three games on the schedule versus InterLakes, Campton, and Franklin. And they had a well-fought game against Belmont last week on the first, ending in a loss. But both teams are co-ed and the players have been working really well together, building on their ski, skills, supporting each other on the field. And the seven, eight team will host Laconia on Wednesday. So, and for a couple of other sports, just quick updates. We held sports physicals and those were completed by Plymouth Pediatrics on September 24th. Our athletes also completed concussion baseline testing and they do that with John Brewley and Deb McManus during their health classes. Sports team photos will be offered on October 14th and 15th. And photo ordering information can be found on the school website under the Athletics tab. Those photos are being done by DC Sport Photos. And also important on the Athletics tab is COVID spectator information. That's both for expectations here at PES and for expectation at opposing teams. So parents want to be sure to check that out before traveling to another site. Moving on to our safety committee. Safety committee met September 2nd and will be meeting again this Wednesday. So far, PES has completed two fire drills and there are further drills being scheduled with the goal of five drills to be completed by the November Thanksgiving break. Also looking at secure classroom drills, those will be discussed at the meeting and a date will be set to offer that drill very soon. And we also are looking at October for our fall bus evacuation drills. This year, the state has offered videos as an alternative to doing the actual physical event, the actual physical drill. And so we'll be discussing that at the meeting on Wednesday as well. And lastly, this week is also Fire Safety Prevention Week. And many thanks goes out to our Plymouth Fire Department. They'll be coming here this week and meeting with our preschoolers and our kindergarteners outside and they'll get to see the whole big fire truck and all the equipment on it and just talk about fire safety. So thank you to them. That's it.
Thank you. Clinton, Carol, do you guys sign off on that?
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay, perfect. We did receive two correspondence, one which I will read and one in regard to the protocols with the nurse, which we will take under advisement. So I'm going to read this email essentially. "My son attends at Plymouth Elementary School. I'm unable to attend the school board meeting, but was advised to message you by Principal Orlando. I have been very dismayed about the required mask policy. It is a real tragedy that children are forced to illogically wear masks. There is a statistical zero risk of injury or death to anyone under 40. Survival rate after infection of COVID for those under 20 is 99.9971%, including all children with underlying illnesses. Logically, if masks work, then if someone chooses, they can wear one. The at-risk group is 70-plus, 94.5% survival rate. That is the group that should wear masks, not our children. A recent study showed that one in four American children under the age of 18 had seriously considered suicide in the previous 30 days. This is hurting our children. Saying we were told by a federal group what to do is no excuse. I consider this arrogant, violation of our liberties, and I believe this to be abusive to children. The development of their brains and high level of neuroplasticity at their age is different from adults. You and I wearing masks from age 40 to 42 means little to our development. But imagine doing that to child ages 12 to 14, being taught that the face is bad, that hugging's not okay, that saying no, I won't wear a mask, then being forced to wear one anyway, taking away personal autonomy and teaching young girls and boys to submit authority and do what they are told is despicable. I hope the school board can explain their decisions based on their own research and logic and what metric do they need to see to end this policy. We are at a statist... Thank you.
Statistical.
Thank you. That word. Zero risk now. When people tell the leaders what to do, that's freedom. When leaders tell the people what to do, that's authoritarian. To those who are willing to sacrifice liberty for temporary security, they wish for something that was, never was, and never will be, is a quote from Benjamin Franklin. I'm also, excuse me, sending a link about the efficient use of masks. Thank you, Tom. So thank you for that letter and we'll take it under advisement." The discussion items, a reopening update.
So Tanya filled in on a bunch of the reopening updates. I think she's looking for approval from you in regards to switching middle school classes and beginning hiking.
Hiking.
And hiking. And that's the only change we have at this point.
Can I ask a question? What are we planning to do for buses? Are we just planning to take sufficient number of buses to allow distancing for field trips?
Yes.
I would move that we-
To clarify, you're talking about now we're going to have students go back and forth instead of teachers?
Correct. That's what I mean.
For middle school.
For middle school. Yep. And where, so a number of the classrooms have interior doors. So the idea would be they would move as a cohort wherever possible to really minimize the time. But kids spending all day in one chair is, there's, it's not just about teaching, it's also just around. Kids need a different space and a different seating to get up and move their bodies.
Sure. I would move that we grant approval for the six, seven, and eight classes to move between class to class instead of having the teachers move from classroom to classroom.
Can I just have you guys speak up a little bit? They're having visual hearing.
Yes.
Hearing you, sorry.
I will make a motion that we approve the requested change to allow the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students to move from class to class as opposed to our current procedure, which is teachers moving from classroom to classroom. And I would also add that we allow the fifth grade and up students to begin one-day field trips out of school with busing.
Thank you.
I would second that.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next thing, Title V, Title IX?
Hold on, two seconds.
Pull that microphone closer to you.
Just trying to get that. Okay. So Title IX was updated over the summer with a 2,000-page law federally. So we got, have a recommendation from the New Hampshire School Boards Association that's down to 21 pages. It is boilerplate, regurgitates the law that we have to follow, really doesn't change much within the school setting. It's more on my end if there's an investigation and what protocols we have to go to at the SAU level. As far as an investigation, protocol's in place, and then us responding to an appeals process. So it's long. We also tried to get it down to a bulleted page and a half, page and a quarter, just to outline the major changes. So I would ask that you move to adopt the, the policy tonight, if you're comfortable with that. We usually have three readings, but this is a, one of those laws that came into place mid-August, and they're just getting out to the recommendations now. So if we can get the boilerplate language approved, and if there's something we need to tweak in the future, we can absolutely do that.
I move to accept it as written.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Who is the Title IX coordinator? Who does that?
So, for the, for the school?
Brian Chan.
Brian Chan.
All right. For the literary budget discussion.
So this is just to start thinking about it. I wanted to give a few, not to do anything yet, but I know it seems quite early. We just got back into the building, but something, we're looking at, I just want you to know that there isn't going to be a shortfall in revenue on a few different ends. So although we, even if we don't have increases in appropriations, there will be some shortfalls. I'm guessing in the, in the realms of adequacy, we'll be down again. You had a stabilization grant for the past two years, so that, from, we're not hearing anything at this point that that's going to be put back in. Medicaid has also had a shortfall as well, so we have had, that happened last year, so we, we got about half, and I think you'll even see more from that. We're able to submit Medicaid orders now again, but we did see a shortfall in that revenue. So those are just the pieces that I wanted to bring up now. Enrollment looks pretty good, actually. We've seen across the district, an uptick in some of, some of the districts, all but two, which we're hoping for, because we have, we were on a decline SAU-wide, so that was good to see a few new families move in. Other than that, I just didn't know if you want to just start thinking about it next month, if you have anything that you've heard around town, or you want to give us feedback on. Otherwise, we're just going to start planning as usual of what's needed. We have a few new pieces of curriculum to put in as well. The reading program is expiring, or has expired, so we're looking at moving on that. You're in your, you'll be in your second year of a new math program, and then we're looking at science as well. So there's a few different pieces that we're up for. John will do the capital improvement plan, as well as Carol Lavasser will do the, will come up with, with Mr. Ramsey as far as the technology plan as well. So just something to think about as we get moving. And I'm looking to have your first draft beginning of December, which it sounds like that's when we started last year. Okay?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
What's the Medicaid shortfall from?
So last year, there was a new executive order put in that we could not submit Medicaid orders without a physician's signature. And that caused a huge backlog as far as the technical assistance that we received from the state, and then they, they worked with us towards the end of the year where we were able to recoup some of that, but what, now we're paying for additional administrative fees for physicians to sign off on some of the orders. Where it used to be speech pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists could sign off on their own orders, so that has changed quite a bit.
Can I ask a question? The magnitude of shortfall on the revenue side, how does that compare to the reduction in expenditures that we were forecasting?
So Dan is figuring that all, all of that out right now with the adequacy as well, and so he's going to have those numbers for me within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
To see what our actuals were at the end of the year.
And the other thing I wanted to discuss is, I wanted to bring up and propose the administration to consider is, is thinking about the holidays and the fact that it might, there are a lot of families that like to travel at the holidays. I'm wondering if it would make sense for us to consider two weeks of remote learning after the Christmas holiday so that families can travel and then self-quarantine at home, and we'll all do remote learning for two weeks, and then come, plan to come back to school after that. It might be nice for families to be able to plan holiday travel without worrying about missing school time for the first two weeks when they come back.
So that question, you talked, the quarantining when you travel outside of New England question?
Yeah. There are a lot of families with, that, you know, it's, if people were able to see families during the summer and quarantine when they got back, it's, it's going to be a long time, and it may, you know, it would, it would be difficult to go until potentially next summer without seeing extended family, especially with, you know, older family members being at risk. I think, I think there's kind of a heightened importance of seeing people when you have the opportunity.
It's, it's something we can consider, something that has been brought up at the commissioners' meeting that we've had over the past two weeks. There's a lot of pressure to shift that question to, if you travel to a hotspot, you have to quarantine for 14 days, because that third question on traveling outside of New England in particular is specific to New Hampshire.
Right.
They are take, right now, they're discussing college visits, and I think within the next few weeks, they are going to discuss the holidays, because that's the question all of us superintendents have is, is this going to loosen up, or is it, because we are going to have an issue with attendance. So we're going to hold on it for right now, because I do think they're discussing it at the state level.
Yep.
But it's definitely something to consider as we get closer.
I'm certainly not looking for commitment tonight, but it's something we can think about over the next few months as, as the holidays get closer.
I'm thinking we're going to hear back within the next few weeks, at least about the college visits, and then they said they'd talk about Thanksgiving, Christmas, or the, the Christmas holiday too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, one more. Just a question, more of a, what is your sense, with families moving in here, I've heard different things about how long they might stay. What, does anybody have a sense of, hey, we're only going to stay for a little while, and we're going back to where we came from, or?
I think in Plymouth, it's more permanent than some of the other districts. Campton and Waterville had upticks of, of families moving into second homes and making it their primary homes. I'm not seeing that as the case in Plymouth at this point. It's more, it's more families just moving into Plymouth to buy homes. Yeah.
And Kyle, I did have one other question.
Yeah.
About the money that the, we're going to get from COVID-19. There was talk that some schools were thinking they were going to get some, and now they're not going to get it. Is that affecting us at all?
So we have been spending as much CARES money act as we can get, so we have been on top of this since, since it's come down the pike. There is talk that we may get some more money, because it's still a significant cost to the district, and it would be helpful if we could get another boost. But we are spending the money now more on staffing and substitute, long-term subs is how it's hitting Plymouth Elementary the most.
And you have computers.
And devices, one-on-one devices, so we're still waiting on the Chromebooks, but that's that big, or it's like a nationwide delay in shipping. But we're okay. I mean, we're, we've been doing, does that say they can't hear? I'm sorry.
Oh, the question list.
Nope. Oh, okay.
All right. We're the last person.
So we're looking for another bump, but other districts had not, spent all their money at that point, so that was a statewide discussion.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Weather days and remote learning.
So I would like to shift or have the authority to, on like a freezing rain day, when it's 32 degrees, to call a remote learning day instead of a snow day. I would only call snow days or no school for if there's a widespread power outage, a microburst, a significant storm, storm that kids couldn't access online learning. So if there is a what, you know, and we have some, some families that live in areas where, you know, gets knocked out more than usual. But you know as well as I do, at 5:00 in the morning sometimes, when I call no school or a delay, it's really an iffy, we just, Plymouth is in a valley, and it hovers around 32 degrees, and it could snow, sleet, rain, and, you know, it's, it's, for lack of a better term, a crapshoot whether or not it's, whether or not it's a, it's a good call or not, but we always err on the side of, of safety. So I would like to have the ability to call a remote day, so you don't lose the day, and we can get out at a reasonable time in, in June, because at least half the days that I'm calling are those freezing rain days or sleet days or anything like that.
Will the teachers have the ability, I'm assuming, to teach from home? They won't have to come in?
Absolutely.
To come in to the school on these days either?
Yes, yes. If it's, if I'm, if it's calling for weather, I would not require any faculty to come in.
And will this take a little bit of extra prodding on the part of teachers to remind students that, you know, if we're, if there's a possibility of bad weather, that we may need to have them be prepared for remote learning?
So we've been trying to, you know, the message from our office is to be prepared for any day, because it was a real eye-opener as soon as Waterville went into remote learning, you really couldn't access the school.
Yeah.
Within a half, I mean, we found out at 2:30, it dismissed the school at 3:00 to go into remote learning. So you have to be, you know, prepping students on what, what a remote day would look like, and the materials you need to bring home every day to at least get through a few days or, or an extended time.
Would you like a vote on that?
Yes, please.
I'd move to allow you to go to remote learning on snow days or inclement weather days.
As needed?
As needed.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm in favor. My children will be broken-hearted if they don't get me snowing.
Well, they might. It might, if it's a blizzard.
They'll be happy in June.
They'll be happy in June.
Yeah.
No kidding.
All right, thank you. I brought it up so early, because I looked last year, and our first weather day was mid-October, so.
We'll be ready next week.
We'll be ready. Thank you, I appreciate it.
And substitute pay for?
Yeah, you know, there's a question. Hold on. If, if, I'm going to ask that, if, if there's any questions from, oh, it says I heard nothing. What was the motion they passed? I heard weather. Oh, it was to allow remote learning for weather days. Okay. Hope that, do you want to type that in there?
Sure.
Okay. Sorry, just want to make sure everybody hears what's going on.
Thank you.
Here or two.
Beer.
All right, subpay, subpay. Our, so there's an obvious shortage of substitutes SAU-wide, and it's, it was short to begin with prior to a pandemic, and I think with a pandemic, obviously, the, you know, the unpredictable, unpredictability maybe of coming into school is an issue. Also, the pay has not been increased in quite a while, so it's something you may want to consider. Fran wanted to bring it up tonight as part of the agenda. Right now, you pay support staff and teachers $70 a day. In most of our districts, there is a difference between if you're filling in as a, as a teacher or as an aide, so it, it might make sense if you want to bump up the teacher pay, the teacher subpay, to either 75 or 80 per day. We have some districts that are up to 80 at this point, to maybe recruit and attract others to come fill in. It's just something you may want to consider. You could table it to next month, or you can discuss it tonight, but it is a board vote if you were to increase it, but it hasn't been increased in, in a while.
I was going to say, do you have a metric of what, what a while is?
I was, yeah, I think if you can speak, if the board members can speak up, we're getting feedback that it's very hard to hear the board.
Of the board.
Are these going to the Zoom?
No, this is what goes to the Zoom.
Okay. So my, my request was just, as a board member, I would question how long it's been since we've adjusted substitute pay?
I can't remember the exact year, but I can get a whole, I think it was, I'm not going to, I think it was around seven years, but I, I want to get to a more accurate answer, because it...
Do you, do you think having an action on this tonight would help critically in the next month?
Tanya?
Yes, absolutely.
And, and how many subs do we typically have? How many sub-days do we have in a typical school year? Ballpark?
Last week, we probably had 12.
Yeah.
12 subs in the building.
In a week?
In a week.
So this is more than what you would normally see, right?
Yes, especially because some of our subs are long-term subs currently. We have a fairly significant substitute issue in the building right now.
And do we know what, you, you said that the range is $70 to $80 per day. Is that, is the average $75 a day, or what is, is there an average for the SAU, or?
They're all over the map.
All over the place.
Yeah, yeah. But typically, there is a difference between support staff pay and teacher pay.
And teacher pay.
Yep.
And if you could make a few more dollars and drive to Holdenis or Thornton.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
It makes a difference about where you're willing to go.
Yeah.
Do we know what those two districts pay for substitutes?
Which two districts?
I, I said Holdenis and Thornton. That seems, that seems to be where we're competing with.
Yeah.
And Campton, actually, Friday, Campton, we lost out, yeah.
I, I'd have to get the chart, but it's between 65 and 80. I think Waterville's at 80, but I can get that information for you as well.
Well, what kind of impact does it have on the budget long-term? I mean, I guess we'll have to figure out how it fits in somewhere.
Right.
This year's probably not going to be typical of, this year's probably not going to be typical of what we're going to see, I think, in the past or hopefully going forward.
I'm actually leaning towards more, but...
More substitute days?
No, no, sorry. I was, I was thinking of, you know, thinking of ranges, my inkling is to go to 80 easily, but Fran had proposed nine. In discussions with Fran on this topic, she had considered 90, which seems like would be preemptive, and we may not know the financial impact of that until we know our typical number of substitutes.
And I would hold off on, I would, I would get some more data before you jump to that high.
Why don't, I would, what I'd like to do is propose that we take teachers to $80 a day and support staff to $75 a day immediately, and then we can all, what I'd like to do is look...
Support staff is at 70.
I'd like to take support staff to 75.
I'm not recommending at this point we, we change the support staff.
No.
No.
Do we have trouble getting support staff?
It's more the teachers.
It's more teachers.
Okay. I'll revise my motion to go to 80 for teachers, but I would like to revisit this topic and look at the number of teacher days we have, and if we find that $80 isn't enough, if we're not getting increased interest at $80, we should evaluate again, because it's really, it, it's, it's a significant contribution of someone's day to spend a day in the school, and they have to be ready, ready on, at call, so there's, there's a lot expected of substitute. So, so my motion stands at $80 for teachers and $70 for support staff.
So I'm second?
Second?
I will second it.
We can discuss further if anybody has concerns. I don't want that to be the, the conversation stopper.
Yeah. I think what you're recommending is good.
Yeah.
Supporting, so all in favor of raising the teacher substitute pay...
So, all in favor of raising the teacher substitute pay to $80 a day? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
And just for the public, the board just voted to raise substitute teacher pay from $70 to $80 per day. Support staff will remain at 70 per day for now. Okay?
All right. Privilege of the floor number two.
There's a question in the chat.
Would you like to read it?
What does it say?
It says, has there been an update on the Read-A-Thon? And I can give that update, which is that Mrs. Como's class and I are working on a Read-A-Thon. Idea that came from a family and a student in the building, and we are working to launch that in the next couple of weeks. We're going to postpone that a little bit. We needed a little more time to get it organized. But it is, we're trying to have it be a real third-grade project and not be an adult project. And for them to take some ownership for that, including the publicity and the keeping track of it, and come to PES News and launch it. So, not having adults take it over means we're moving it a little more slowly than we might have, which I actually think is better. But it's taking us a little bit of time, but we, we will make it happen.
Perfect. Thank you. All right.
I have another question, if I may.
Yeah.
For the administration. Thinking about the new middle school election of officers for the student council, is there anything that we as a board could offer or discuss with them? I'm often disappointed with the ability of students in those roles to feel engaged. So, I'm wondering, is there anything we could have a team where we ask them to come work with us on a decision and kind of ask for their input on a topic? I'm wondering if in our process of going through our daily lives, is there anything that we can winnow out and isolate and say, can we ask the school board for their thoughts on this? So, as a development for those, not to add to your plate, but if you come along, if you come across any topics along the way that need our input, I would love to have their engagement in something.
So, sometimes there's a student rep at the board level is too. At the high school, we have that sometimes. So, they report out on, instead of Tanya reporting out on some of the happenings going on, they might send a rep to report out on it.
I would love to hear from a student rep if they wanted to offer that.
I agree.
I'll ask them.
Yeah. Thank you.
If they're interested, we can put it right on the agenda.
Great idea, Phil. All right. Is there anyone else who needs to say anything? Thanks for coming to the meeting. I'd like to go to...
Non-public?
Non-public?
Make a motion to move to non-public?
I'll second the motion to go to non-public.
Okay. All in favor?
Thank you, love.
Okay, thanks for coming.